I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there anyone out there with audio other than the town? Ms. Rondo, you doing art?
Not tonight, sir.
Not tonight, okay. Public comment, anybody out there, public comment? Hearing done, we'll go to number five, the reorganization of the committee. School policy file, BBA nominations for the office of chairperson will be made by the school committee. The chairperson will be elected by a majority roll call vote of the members present and voting. If no nominee receives a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void, and nominations will be reopened. Upon the election, the new chairperson will preside, calling for the election of a vice chairperson. The procedure used for this election will be the same as that of electing the chairperson. And then, subcommittee appointments, newly elected chair will facilitate the appointment of 2022, 2023 subcommittees. Okay, so our first order of business is to get our chairperson for next year. So, I will entertain nominations for chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Ryan Forsyth.
Okay.
To serve as chair for the next year.
Okay, do we have, that's one nomination. Other nominations for chair? Okay, hearing none.
settled.
We'll take a roll call vote then, since we don't have anyone else on there. Want to make sure if I go, okay. All right, we'll start down at your end, Alicia.
Just quick clarification, we're voting on his nomination?
My nomination of Ryan.
For chair, yep.
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen, aye, okay. Congratulations, Ryan, you are the new chairperson.
You're in the hot seat now.
And I get to move.
I almost said, Mr. Chair, Larry, I'll stay right here. I'll move next week.
You move next week?
I'm good.
Oh, they made me move the first week I got.
They kicked me out, I had to, I had to move when I, once before, I've done this dance.
All ayes are now upon you.
Very ceremonial.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I left the crowd at home.
Yeah.
All right, well, to my fellow board members, thank you very much. This'll be, as I know you, you all know, this will be my, certainly my first time in this role, so I will look to others to, to help as we go through what will, I'm sure, be a, a great year, but I am, I am very thankful for, for your confidence, and I appreciate that. So now, we will take, move on to our next order of business, which is taking nominations for the vice chairperson of the board. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Larry?
I'd like to nominate Greg Vine.
That is one nomination for Greg Vine for vice chair. Are there other nominations?
I'm happy to serve again.
Karen? Very good. Any other nominations? All right, Mr. Murphy, if you can, you've done this before, if you can remind me how this works.
Same process as it was for you.
All right.
So, it's just majority vote, so we take a roll call vote, somebody gets a majority, then they get the job.
And each individual will say the name of their chosen candidate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have two nominations before we take a vote, any other nominations for vice chair? We have two nominations, Greg Vine and Karen Cast. Greg or Karen, thank you, I assume that you both would be willing to serve? Very good, all right, then we'll take a roll call vote, and we'll start at the other end, Karen, please.
I would vote for myself, obviously.
Mr. Murphy?
Greg?
Greg?
I'll humbly vote for myself.
Alicia?
Karen.
And the chair will vote for Greg. And so, our vice chair for the next academic year, fiscal year, will be Greg Vine, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service this year, and for your willingness to serve again.
Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you, Karen.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Karen, thank you for covering for me when I missed a couple times.
Oh, yeah.
When I was in the hospital and whatnot, you did a good job.
I'm just glad you're better now.
Thanks.
All right, our next order of business is addressing our subcommittee assignments for next year. In your packet, you have the list of subcommittees, and for those of you that have been on the board before, of course, you know that we have had assignments this year where most of our committees were quite active, especially those that were involved in negotiations with all of our units, that, that work was heavy this year. In future years, of course, that work will be a little bit different, with most of our units finishing up their bargaining probably this summer. What that means is that we do have a number of committees, that we will want to fill all of our committees with representatives from, from this committee, and keeping in mind what that work will be. It may be worth it, especially for Alicia, being new to the committee, to maybe go through the committees and just give, you know, the, the group can collectively share what each committee does, if that's helpful.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
All right, I will start, and perhaps we can have some of the other committee members chime in, those of you that especially know what, what some of these committees do. We'll start with the policy committee, the policy committee does review school committee policy, where policy does not exist on the state level or through our professional association, the MASC. Additional policies on behalf of the district are one of the primary responsibilities of the school committee, and so establishing those policies is something, or I should say drafting those policies for the full committee to consider is something that the policy committee does.
Um, Ryan, we also update any state and association policies as they get updated to, just, so we add to that.
You also see four subcommittees for negotiating purposes, the Worcester Teachers Association, the Para Educators Union.
Winston. The Worcester Teachers Association.
Worcester Teach, my goodness, I'm telling you folks, different roles, they blend together.
Alicia can get on that one and go to Worcester.
Uh, Winston and Teachers Association, of course, the, right there, right there, there she is, the custodians, the secretaries, and the paraprofessional educators. All of those organizations have been in discussions with the school committee in recent months as their contracts, I believe all four of them were expiring on June 30th, so that negotiation has either occurred or is in the process of occurring during the summer. We are hopeful that there will be resolution on the couple of contracts that are outstanding, and if that is the case, then each one of the bargaining units will have contracts in place for some period of time, one year's, two years, three years, depending on what the agreement is. And the committees will, of course, be populated so that if impact bargaining or any other type of necessity to discuss with, with the unions is necessary, we have representation there. Others, other thoughts on the roles of those negotiating committees?
No, it sounds about right, I, I, well, I'll wait until we go to make assignments, but I would, I'd make a suggestion when, if I can, when we get to that point.
Karen, it might be helpful for you to help us understand the roles of the communication and wellness committees, I think you've been on those before.
I'm not on the wellness, that one was actually, well, wellness was Mike and, Mike had taken over for Shawna, so I don't think we have anybody right now.
Just for the wellness committee, only because I served on this a couple of years ago, basically, it's to keep the rest of the committee sort of up to date on what's taking place in terms of activities at the school and the services that Chartwell's providing, the kinds of meals that they're providing, how to, what they're doing to make sure that all the kids in the district are being, getting the kind of nutrition that they need, and despite any economic disadvantages they may face, as well as, I know when I was on wellness, we discussed the establishment of, and you can help me here, Thad, regarding the, the technological names for these things, but the, the garden that they were going to set up in, in a, basically, an empty truck, and...
Yeah, the container garden, their container farm, I should say.
Right, setting that up, as well as doing some of that gardening in the classroom as well. It meets once every three months, and so it doesn't demand a whole lot of time, it could be pretty interesting, and it gives you, certainly gives you input on what should be presented to the kids. I know that one of the things we talked about when I was on the wellness committee was the abject failure of Chartwell to offer whole wheat pasta as an alternative to the, the kids, which went over like a, a lead balloon, it was not a real popular choice among the students for, for offering, I mean, obviously, you try to give them the healthiest meals you can, but you have to also offer things they're going to eat, so, so that's a sort of a basic idea of what the wellness committee thus far has been doing. And if I can suggest at, at, at this juncture, that, you know, we're, we're talking and from our own experiences working on these committee, I think it might do us well to sit down at some point, if we have to establish another subcommittee to do it, I guess we can, but to basically come up with written job descriptions, if you will, for what the duties are to serve on these committees, because at this point, really, what it comes down to is we're just sort of winging it, and I think something should be set down in concrete, so that we have some guidelines to follow.
I like that, I like that proposal.
And Ryan, to go back to the communication subcommittee, that was something that came up, especially during the pandemic, the parents were asking for better and more communication, and I will say that, I think we've been in so much turnover and turmoil, there's just been one thing after another that we really haven't gotten that off the ground, and that's been Greg and I, and I just think that we've been, you know, what with negotiations and everything, that's been the priority this year. That, that's something that we need to focus on going forward, because I know that, you know, I'm still having parents contacting me and saying, how can we, you know, work on that, especially, you know, certain parents that did push for it, so that is something that I am very passionate about, you know, us moving forward with, and I do agree with Greg, that if we could come up with job description, or at least a brief, you know, idea of what we're supposed to be doing with these committees, these subcommittees, I think that mask outlines the policy committee stuff pretty well, they're actually having a lunch and learn, I believe, on the 29th about the policy committee, which I plan on attending anyways, just out of curiosity, so, that's something that if anybody else is interested, I can send that out to everybody.
Great, run through a couple more of these committees, just for everyone's knowledge, the calendar committee, of course, works on the academic calendar each year, Larry Murphy has been a steadfast member of that subcommittee for quite a while.
He loves it.
Loves it. The capital planning committee, Greg, if you could talk a little bit about that, you've been on that for a couple of years.
Sure, capital planning committee is really a, a town committee, and we have a representative from the school committee serving on it this past, well, past couple of years, it's been myself, it's made up of representative from school committee, select board, finance committee, and there's also an at-large, if you will, individual who's, who's appointed, I want to say there's one other representative, another board representative, but I, I can't recall it off the top of my head, and basically, it's to take a look at the requests for expenditures that the various departments put in for capital items, whether it be a new fire truck, whether it be the, the lift, the handicap lift that we have at Toy Town, items of that nature, and the capital planning committee does its best to prioritize those, those items that come from each department, and determine how to, to get the money for those items, a lot of it, much of it comes through free cash, but there are other sources that are used to fund those items as well, and naturally, as a representative of the school committee, it's partially my, the responsibility of the person who's on capital planning to advocate for those items that the school department wants to see funded, but it goes beyond that to basically advocate, or weighing, if you will, the priorities of the rest of the town against the priorities of the school department, and doing what's best for the most people involved, so that, sort of is a thumbnail sketch of that.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Murphy could probably do us the best service by describing four of our committees, the sick bank, the finance committee, the townwide audit committee, and the Monty Tech representative, Mr. Murphy, would you mind covering those?
No, on the sick bank committee, what that involves is we have a group, if a staff member gets sick and they use all their, all their days...
They can apply for more.
They can apply for more, so there is a committee to determine, you know, whether they, they want to give up their sick, sick time and put it in the bank and share it with that person, so that's, that's pretty much that, knock on wood, hopefully, we won't need it. The finance committee is basically a committee that helps in the budget process to work with the, the finance committee in the town, to try and come up with a fair and equitable budget, so it's kind of an advisory, and you serve on that finance committee. The townwide audit committee, Karen, you'd probably do better with that, I, I wasn't on that.
Well, I mean, we've only had one meeting, so I, I know you were on it before, so I think, we literally had one meeting to introduce ourselves, so...
We, I was on it, and I went to two meetings, so, so I'm twice as experienced.
My second meeting is, is Tuesday.
All right, I, I had two meetings, and basically, it's just a review of the, of the town budget to make sure that the money's going where it's supposed to go, it's a very short meeting usually, but, yeah, and, let's see, what else we got, Monty Tech, Monty Tech representative, again, Karen said earlier, we, we were so focused on negotiations and whatnot, we really, and that was me, I really didn't have a lot of opportunity to, to get the Monty Tech, the, we have, is it Megan?
No, Tara Cassavan.
Tamara.
Tamara, I'm sorry, Tamara Cassavan is the...
All right, so we all got it wrong.
Yep.
Tamara, thank you.
Yep.
So, we, we do have a representative there, but the, you serve as the liaison that with Tamara and with Monty Tech, we had Dr. Mo Ward here before, she was a representative, and she did reports and stuff here for us. I did go to Monty Tech, I went to a school committee meeting, just to show my face and see what was going on, and see how they run things and whatnot, so I have done that, and I've got a little bit of passion for Monty Tech, so... Karen, I could, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, and CAPS and Keystone are the special ed collaboratives, so those are monthly to buy, I, I don't know about Keystone, because Thad's been doing that, CAPS has been hit and miss, because they've, they've kind of changed up their meetings at the last minute, so, they had, they were doing monthly, and then they kind of switched it to every other month, and had a few issues come up, so, they, but, I mean, it's, it's basically a board meeting, basically to go, basically what we do here, just overseeing the budget and everything, but because we're part of their collaborative, we send students there, you go and you, you kind of make sure that, you know, our students are being treated well, all the, you know, the money's going where it's supposed to, they're very nice.
For all of our subcommittees, we do obviously capitalize on the expertise in the room, so if someone has an area of interest or expertise in a certain subcommittee, that's obviously desirable, it helps the committee, and it helps the, the broader school committee. We also want to make sure that all of our committees are covered, and so in previous years, each one of the school committee members would have approximately five assignments on various subcommittees, so as to provide that, that coverage, that, that school board wide coverage, and so, we certainly hope that folks have an interest in serving in a subcommittee, if you do, we should express that, if you don't, then we, then we could nominate folks to, to serve, but let's start with, with any interest that we have, does anyone have any items that they'd be interested in serving in?
Mr. Chair, can I, not to hold up the process, but I guess out of deference to Alicia, just want to ask if you feel comfortable volunteering or being appointed to a committee tonight?
Yeah, any of these I would be able to handle.
All right, because I was going to say, if we needed to, maybe we could wait until the...
Nope.
What do you call it, the retreat, but okay, that's all I wanted to.
That's, that's amazing, my first meeting, I was scared to death of this.
Well, that, that, since you already recognized me, I guess, well, first of all, are, are we still doing appointments to the negotiating teams at this point, will we foresee a need to?
I think we do need to, the work might be much lighter than this year, but, God forbid, not God forbid, but, you know, if...
You're going to need somebody to sub in for Mike on custodians, right?
Yeah, that was me.
Yeah, Larry's been, been doing that, I, I would suggest at, at this point, that the teams that are working on the custodians and the, I believe it's secretaries, that those two teams remain as they are for now, just...
Because they're established, right?
So, for custodians, that is Greg and Larry, Larry filling in for Mike, and for the secretaries, that was Karen and myself.
Yep.
All right.
And other than that, I guess if we were asking for preferences, I'd like to remain with the WTA and the capital planning.
Very good, anyone else have any interests, any preferences that you'd like to serve on a certain, certain, subcommittee? Karen?
Communications and policy, definitely. And since I'm already, since I had to be sworn in for town audit committee, because I have to be, you have to be sworn in separately, I should probably stay on that, I'm sure everybody wants to, wants that one, though, so, you know, if you want to fight over it, it's fine, I know Larry wants it really bad.
Alicia, don't want to put you on the spot, but if you had any preferences?
Are there any that are just open, because I don't know ones you're already serving on?
We currently have representatives for all of the committees in the current academic year, even with Mike's leaving the board.
Yeah.
There, there are still spots, there are a couple places where, of course, Mike was serving, such as the wellness committee, the finance committee, and a couple other committees that he was replaced on, but other than, than those, he'll be absent, of course, from those committees, otherwise, all of the committees have folks serving in them now.
Wait, I can fill the gaps where there are, where there's need, especially if it's replacing Mike, so you mentioned wellness and finance, I'm fine with that.
Great. Mr. Murphy?
Calendar.
There it is.
Shocker.
And I'll stick with the Monty Tech. And hopefully, negotiations with the custodians.
Yeah.
Well, I already put you there.
Yeah, and then negotiations with the WTA.
Okay, very good.
Who's on the secretaries, Karen?
No, that is Karen.
Ryan and I.
Oh, okay, Karen, all right, so I thought... Karen, would you like to remain with me on the paraeducators committee by chance?
Oh, yeah, I think we have a good...
Good, I would like to continue on the policy committee. I will also continue to serve in the sick bank role.
Have you had to do anything for that yet?
No.
That's why you want to stay on it.
And I will add my, if, show my preference to be on the finance committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I certainly am, am more than willing to, to do communication, I was going to say again, but we haven't really done it yet, the communications committee, but if that's, if Alicia would like to do that, if that would be a preference for her, I'm more than willing to step aside for that, if that sounds interesting to her.
You may have that, Greg, no problem.
What's that?
You can take it.
Alicia's only got one right now, so...
Wellness and finance, and then what is remaining, is it Keystone, CAPS?
Well, Keystone, Thad does, I think, because he's superintendent.
So what remains?
Could I make a recommendation?
Larry?
Sorry, go ahead.
You didn't put your hand up for CAPS, or...
No, I didn't.
Okay, so my recommendation is, is that we have the superintendent do CAPS.
That's what I was going to say.
Because that, that's, that's a, that's a big one, and I know when I was on CAPS, there are a lot of superintendents that represented the district, so my recommendation would be Thad for that one.
Sorry, Thad.
Accepted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So again, I'm more than willing to step aside on the communications committee, if you like it.
I mean, if you don't mind joining me on communications, Alicia, I mean, it, it's also a good way to work with some of the families and students, too.
I will serve at the pleasure of the committee.
Which one is that?
Communications.
Okay. Okay. Again, Karen, I don't want you to think I was trying to get out of working with you, but I just thought Alicia might enjoy it.
And the, by my notes here, it looks as though our only opening is on the wellness subcommittee. We have Alicia.
Who did we say for capital planning now?
Greg.
Well, he didn't say.
That's right. Capital planning, Greg volunteered.
Oh, I didn't hear him, okay.
Somebody said wellness.
I did.
Alicia did, yeah.
Yeah, I have Alicia, but I have two spots, so do we only need one?
You have two.
Well, it's got two there, so I would assume you need two. Just taking a wild guess.
Would anyone else like to serve with Alicia on?
I can do wellness, too.
All right. Mr. Chair, can we just count up and make sure nobody's being overburdened?
Of course.
Each one of us can count how many we got. One, two, three, four.
I've got three.
You slacker.
Greg has CAPS.
All right, how many did you have?
I've got four.
Okay.
Greg's on, and you guys have WTA and, again?
Yeah.
Greg and Larry?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Because you know, somebody's going to ask me for this list next year.
Here's a shot.
Larry.
Yeah.
And who else is on finance? We have two spots there, too.
Finance is Alicia.
Ryan and Alicia. Ryan, I knew I heard somebody else.
So we have Alicia with three subcommittees, Ryan with five, Karen with six, Greg with three.
Karen has six?
I don't think so. Townwide.
Policy, communications.
Oh, yeah, I can't count.
Negotiation secretary, negotiation para, townwide committee.
Well, par is pretty much over.
And wellness.
Mr. Chair, if Larry doesn't mind, I don't want to take his place, but I was wondering if he would have a problem with my serving as an alternate, or an associate on the Monty Tech.
I have no problem at all.
Okay. I think we passed a resolution this year that all subcommittee, excuse me, all school committee members can be alternates and can be assigned to any subcommittee in a pinch, or I should say at any time, with the vote of the board. So certainly we can recognize you as, as being a member of that subcommittee, but if you needed to hop in for a reason, that would be, that would be allowable.
Okay. You just saved me that question, that's what I was going to ask, if we wanted to do that as a part of this.
All right, if, if the committee will indulge me, I'll read these off, just so that everyone's notes are the same, and then we'll vote as a slate. First of all, hold on, actually, I, we asked for preferences, are there any other preferences or any other nominations for subcommittees? Okay, we'll read these off. I have on the policy committee Karen and Ryan, on the negotiations with the Winchun and Teachers Association, Greg and Larry, negotiations custodians, Greg and Larry again, communications Karen and Alicia, negotiations with secretaries Karen and Ryan, wellness is Alicia and Karen, negotiations paraeducators Karen and Ryan, calendar Larry, capital planning Greg, sick bank Ryan, finance Alicia and Ryan, townwide audit Karen, Monty Tech representative Larry and Greg as an alternate, CAPS representative and Keystone representative, the superintendent, Mr. Kane.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we vote to approve the list of subcommittee appointments as read by the chair.
Second?
We have a first and a second. We will take a, is there any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on that, beginning with Alicia, please.
Yay.
Greg?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye, it is unanimous, congratulations, everyone. Is that worthy of congratulations?
Sympathies.
We'll let you know at the end of the year.
Apologies. All right. Very good, thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is the student representative, of course, Maria has graduated and is going on to, to do great things. She is not with us tonight, I don't think we have a.
Our students are at roll eight today, so I cannot have students.
Very good.
Well, it was poor planning on, on the part of this legion, they should know that we have a meeting tonight.
Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, for which we do not have one tonight, so we'll cruise right over that item, and that brings us to the superintendent's report. Mr. Kane.
Great, thank you. So very quickly, a COVID update. I, I have to say that we're back in good graces, I really don't have an update in terms of the district. We don't have current concerns relative to COVID or any, any issues with folks being out as it stands today, so happy to present that as, as a COVID update tonight. In terms of the budget report, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Mullen for a quick budget update as we're trying to close the budget before June 30th this year.
Good evening. In front of you, you'll have the year-to-date budget report. This was run this morning after our second-to-last payroll for the year. If you take a look at the bottom line, on the last page, grand total remaining, according to this report, is roughly $700,000. We do have one more payroll to go, which will be June 30th, and that will cover all of the contractual staff members remaining, not including teachers, paras, and a few of the year-long employees. We do have a plan in place to, which will come later in this meeting, to address the negative line items in, in the budget so far, and to ensure that we've got a balanced budget for the end of the year.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Murphy?
We seem to have a lot of negatives.
Mm-hmm.
And some big chunks. So you said, wow, 20 grand. So can you just give me a quick explanation as to why we have so many negatives when we're almost at the end of the rainbow?
Of course. For most of this year, the finance department has been making what I call microtransfers to address any, any invoices that may come up and put a line item into a negative. One of the first things that I did was I, when I, when you hired me, I put a stop to that, cleared that with the town accountant, and I did discuss this with you at an earlier meeting. I wanted to be able to evaluate the budget over the next couple of months, to be able to find where the weaknesses and the strengths were in the funding of each line item. If we continue to do those types of microtransfers, it, it wouldn't be as apparent as to where those, those weaknesses or strengths were. Coming down to the end of the year, we see where those are, we're still able to make those transfers at this time, and it gives us a better idea, not necessarily next year because that budget has already been created, but going forward with future budgets, as to where our funding may be needed, maybe needed to be adjusted a little bit more.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Well, some of these salaries, there's a lot of money in salaries that were in the Special education seems to have a lot of, are we waiting for?
Address that, please. I'll address that, so I think we've discussed throughout the year where we.
Circuit breaker money?
Uh, circuit breaker, so let me just kind of address the salary piece in general and sort of the way that, you know, we've talked about it in here before, so as you'll recall, that we have multiple systems in place for sal, for payroll. So we use one system to actually execute payroll, and then after that, we actually, or not we, but the town applies payroll into the Munis system, which is our accounting system. And so what we've seen historically is that there are folks in there, and I think special ed is a good example, I think the high school special ed has people in there that are, although they're paid clearly, there are people misplaced throughout Munis based on their org numbers. So one of the things that we've tried to do continually is to clean that up, and so move teacher X from special ed, where for some reason she has resided eternally, it seems like, when that person is actually a math teacher. So what we have found over time is that you have a teacher maybe that's being charged in Munis out of the special ed account when they apply the payroll into Munis manual, it's a manual entry. However, we have them assigned, they're a math teacher, and so when Mr. Mullen has referenced sort of these micro-adjustments, one of the practices that I had done was to simply account for that as we go. However, it's not been permanently changed through the Munis system where we have to reassign numbers and whatnot. So although there's some negatives, you'll see that there's also some positives, and that's a result of folks being in the wrong places in that accounting system, which we're aware of and we desperately want to fix so that we don't continually run into this. The other place that you'll see some negatives, we have some large negatives in the substitute line specifically at Memorial, so we had a long-term, if you'll recall that we, as a policy, we changed the sub-policy earlier this year where a person that's a long-term sub immediately began to receive payment at step one of the teacher's salary. So we had a situation at Memorial where we typically account for a certain amount of money as for substitutes, we had the need for a long-term sub there, and that person has been paid at that, at that new rate that we voted earlier in the year. So that certainly made a big dent in that particular line. So when Mr. Mullen came on, we certainly were aware it is a bottom-line budget, we were completely aware that our salary lines overall balanced out, and in fact, we know that we're actually ahead. So as an example, Mr. Mullen's position himself was a position that was not filled for the majority of the year, so there's definitely an excess there. We had a couple of positions that went unfilled throughout the year, whether that's speech and language pathologists that were just not able to fill, and we've been using services from Keystone, and then they didn't have any speech and language pathologists, et cetera. So we know there's a number of lines where there's an excess. So actually, overall, from a salary perspective, it's in the black and not in the red. So that sort of explains some of those positions, so we know that those need to be cleaned up. So when we actually create the budget, or when I've created the budget in the past, what I look at is where I know people exist, so if I know that teachers one, two, three, and four are math teachers, that's how the budget is created. That's how it's then entered into Munis. However, if folks are charged to the wrong locations, it's how we end up with negatives. So we're working to clean that up.
So is that, and does that mean then that next month, or for the end-of-year report then, that for example, the $73,000 overrun that we're seeing right now in seventh and eighth grade teachers' salaries will be, that'll be zeroed out?
Correct. We'll have that zeroed out and by, to close out for the end-of-year report, absolutely. Every line should be zero by the time we close out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So out of 14.8 million, it's like we've expended 13.6. We have 524,000, I can't do the math that fast in my head. Doesn't look like we're going to have enough money, are we?
We should have after the next payroll, I don't know, we've been back and forth today, but it's going to be somewhere around $500,000. The next payroll is approximately $100,000, there's probably some stipends to pay and those type of things, that, that will be paid on the 30th, two weeks from today. So that excess is also a result of our ESSR funds, so we've been able to move a lot of different types of expenses, specifically professional development and those types of things that we otherwise had in the budget. We have taken kind of the precaution over the course of the year to move those things into ESSR. So one of the moves that we will most likely make is to, for any of those things that we can bring back down out of ESSR funds and preserve that money to go forward, we will. And then we have, you know, some other projects that we would like to resolve as well before the end of the year that we can get into, into Munis and get those, those POs switched over so that we can spend that money, much like we've, we do that at the end of every year. This year, we have, not as much as we had last year, but we have moved a lot of, of pieces into ESSR that were otherwise into the budget earlier this year.
Mr. Chair? Just a request, I guess, if you can, because sometimes I can be a little slow. So I was wondering if you could, in formatting the reports, if you could put the headings at the top of every page, please, yeah?
Sure, absolutely, sorry about that.
Well, Greg beat me to that request.
Larry, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just, you know, the budget is a very sensitive thing, it's been a mess for years and years and years. And I know, and I appreciate the fact that you've worked really hard. I know Joan started the process before you, Thad, to try and navigate through it and get it straightened out, and now you've done your due diligence trying to do the same thing, and you finally have a business manager, so you, so, but my hope and prayer is at the end of this year that we don't have any negatives and we're not given large chunks of money back to the town.
We won't have negatives and we will not be giving money back to the town.
You heard that, it's on tape. All right.
I'll second that one as well.
Yeah, that, that's all, I, you know, I trust you that you're going to put, my quote always says, you know, you put the money in the right buckets, and I trust that you're going to put the money in the right buckets, but I also want to make sure that there's no hole in those buckets and they become negative, and also they don't become overflowing and we end up giving money back to the town. We should, we should be, you know, pretty close to what we told them, we, we told the town what we needed, pretty transparent, we needed this amount of money and we spent that amount of money.
Absolutely. I think that what you see in the negatives right now is just a different philosophical approach between the way that I was, and myself and Joan were sort of running the budget versus the way that Mr. Mullen, who's, you know, trained to do this, was running it in terms of his sort of quarterly approach and sort of those, our micro-adjustments is something that's philosophically different than the way he wants to approach it. So I think overall, you know, we have known all along that we have budgeted for the correct amount of payroll, you know, we're very comfortable with the payroll sort of balancing, if you will, and so it's just really a different approach, I think, in terms of the, the accounting. But I'm comfortable to say right now that, you know, we are, we are comfortable in that we know it's a balanced budget and it'll come out, it'll zero out at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that report, and thank you, Mr. Mullen, for the information about the budget. We do have new business this evening, including a couple of roles, the, excuse me, one role, and some budget transfer work, so we'll start with the math coach, and perhaps the superintendent can describe this item.
Sure. So I've put on tonight the proposal to create a position for a math coach, specific, most specifically at our elementary level, so if you'll think back to the budget request that we've really focused on the elementary literacy, we have a lot of literacy, and when I say literacy, we're, we're thinking of reading and writing primarily. One of the things that we, we did not really work on at that time was, was the math, and as you know, math numbers are usually fall behind in terms of scores, but behind the literacy or the, the reading and writing. So we have found some grant money that would give us the ability to create a math coach position that we would like to, I'm presenting tonight, that I would like to hire in, and that would be in alignment with sort of the budget vision that we had and our vision going forward. We have adopted a new math curriculum, that there will be extensive. extensive PD on for all of our teachers, especially our elementary teachers. It's actually a K to 12 adoption. It's imaginative math. It's a new curriculum that we adopted. There was a faculty curriculum team that made that adoption process, and now we have that in place. And the math coach would give us a better ability to ensure the sort of fidelity and integrity of the implementation of that, of that math curriculum as we move into next year. So we do have the budgeting for that within grants.
Which grant, excuse me, which grant and what term is that grant?
We have currently the Rural Aid Grant that we receive annually. We've worked to hire some positions using that Rural Aid Grant, specifically ESL in the past. However, we were unsuccessful in, in having anybody apply for that position. But we, we do have a Rural Aid Grant that we receive annually and have sufficient funds to budget for that particular position.
And what is the term of the grant or the position within?
Uh, we get that, we get that grant annually. The Rural Aid Grant is an annual grant that we receive. So I would like to dedicate that to this particular position.
Thank you. Just for the edification of everyone out there, when you're talking about a math coach, you're talking about what exactly? I mean, is this going to be providing after-school work? Is this during the school day for kids that are flunking? For any kid that wants it? What, what exactly is their duty?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. Traditionally, a math coach is a person who works most directly with teachers. So as we're implementing a new curriculum, which is a very, sort of a different math. Math is not taught the way that you and I learned math years ago, Mr. Vine. And so as we, as we've adopted this, and it's in alignment with DESI, and it's, it's a curriculum that DESI supports, we'll be providing professional development to all of our teachers. And so one of the ways to ensure sort of the integrity of that delivery is to have a math coach who can go around and support that professional development by, by working with teachers, by working with them through common planning time that we created this year using the hiring of our, our music and art teachers at the elementary schools. So it's a way to support the teachers. In this particular implementation, it would be less working with small groups of children than it would be more to support our teachers directly in their, in their implementation of this program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, could I make a motion?
Yes, Larry.
I'd like to move to approve the new position of math coach for the Winchun and Public Schools.
No second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. We'll do a vote and begin with Karen.
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Alicia?
Yay.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Our next item is a budget transfer request. Mr. Mullen or Mr. King?
So by policy, it is required that the school committee approves transfers between personnel and non-personnel lines. So as we're looking to close out the budget, we're aware that we will have some overages in personnel, that we would like to have the support of the school committee to move those overages as we find them over to non-personnel lines or operational lines so that we can fund appropriate projects that we would like to implement before the end of the year.
And that, Mr. King, is within the same budget numbers that we just went over? That is within the $695,000 surplus that is currently pending some portion of that. I think you said $100,000 is salaries, and we need to do transfers to get the other $600,000 into other, other lines?
So correct. In order to, as we close out the school year, what we would like to do is, obviously, we'll zero out the, the salary lines, but we know that we will be left with, you know, we'll, we'll be left with salary lines that we still have available, of which obviously we can't spend that in salary since the, the payrolls have been spent. So as we find those, we need school committee approval to move those from a salary line to a non-salary line so that then it can be spent.
Mr. Vine?
I understand what you're saying, and I trust that you're going to do what you're saying you're going to do. But I, I have to, to admit that I tend to feel more comfortable when I have something in front of me to, to look at. And I'm not going to withhold support for this tonight, but if there's any way to provide the kind of documentation for us to look at in the future, that'd be appreciated.
Understood. And one of our difficulties as we get to the end of the year is, is the way payrolls go out for our teachers specifically and our paraprofessionals, where today's payroll actually was for, essentially four checks for the majority of our teachers. So today's payroll is a huge payroll in terms of, of the end of the school year. So you really wait to get to this one so that it clears and we know, we get a much finer idea of, of what we have left. We had a number of, you know, a lot of stipends and those types of things that we pay out at the end of the year. So I, I completely understand what you're, what you're referencing, and we will do a better job next year.
Well, even in this case, I'm not necessarily looking for, you know, what teacher is being covered by what transfer or anything like that. Or, you know, not necessarily specifics down to the penny, but even just an explanation in writing of how much, you know, ballpark is going to be.
A ballpark dollar amount.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'd be happy to supply that once we've identified them.
Thank you.
All right. We have a request for budget transfer approval for the school commi-, excuse me, school committee, for the school administration. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Vine?
I'd move to approve the budget transfer request as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right. Alicia?
Yeah.
Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you. In your packet, you have some information from the school administration regarding the CEP, Community Eligibility Provision, and we're going to have a short presentation on that from the superintendent's staff, and then potentially a vote. So we'll turn it over again to Mr. King.
Sure. I think, you know, and after the transparency is really what we're after here in terms of a lot of the things we're doing tonight, and this one's included. So this is a real positive, quite frankly, and I think it's been some discussion around this table in terms of being prepared for next year relative to folks being a little bit surprised that we were going to be charging for lunches again. You know, we haven't charged for breakfast or lunch for the past couple of years due to COVID. This was brought to us over the past week or so from food services that there is a plan in place called the Community Eligibility Provision. So there is a little, short little pamphlet in there, but basically this allows locate, low-income areas provide free breakfast and lunch to all students. So you'll see, the, the front page is really the, the math of it all. You'll see at the end, our total, you know, we would, we would be positive in lunches, negative in breakfast, but overall, we're coming out in the green if we were to supply, excuse me, basically vote for this to accept that we're going to do the Community Eligibility Provision, and it would allow all of our, all of our students K to 12 to have free breakfast and lunch again next year. So, you know, as this is financial, I just wanted to bring it in front of the committee for your approval.
Superintendent, when you print out things like this, can, can we please get it in black and white? Because can't read this.
I see that it's unreadable. The, I, I can tell you that the total difference piece there is, is we're in the green in the bottom right-hand corner by about $700. It is, was the money number there. I did notice that tonight when I brought those over. My apologies.
No, just unfortunately, I mean, not just speaking, i- if we were in, you know, if we were, if somebody from the public wanted to see this or were visually impaired in some way?
I believe the online packet is, is clear. It is a PDF. I think this must have been our printer, but I think the PDF online.
Well, if I were looking at the, when I looked at it online, yes, I can read it. But looking at it here, even with my handy-dandy new glasses, it's not readable, so.
I understand.
Just going forward, and if we're going to enlarge things, can we make sure they're not blurred? Because that's the other issue with this. I, I know it was enlarged, but not to be a pain in the butt, but we do want things to be readable for us.
I understand.
I do appreciate it. I think this is a great idea for our community, though.
Other questions?
I'd like to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve federal reimbursement as presented on the Community Eligible Provision, CEP, Monthly Federal Reimbursement Estimator.
No second. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is there anything else we need to do?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything else we need to do?
No. With this approval, then what we'll do is go online. Right now, parents are able to, you know, they fill out their applications online, and so this will be able to notify them. Once we approve this, we'll be notifying parents online through the application where they would normally fill out for free and reduced lunches.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next new business item is captured in a memo that is in your packet from the curriculum director, Jonathan Landman, regarding the donation of mathematics materials. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to speak on this?
Sure. So as you just heard, you know, we have adopted a new math curriculum for next year. The other piece to this is, you know, we routinely, we get to the end of the year and we try to get rid of some of our old materials that we've accumulated over time, and any assets have to be approved, the disposal of those have to be approved by the school committee. In this particular case, it's sort of a real positive in that there is another district in the state who is continuing with the Envisions Program that, that we have extra books for. It just so happened that through some conversations with some DESI representatives, they knew that there was another district looking for those books and are willing to pick those up if we donate them. So those are enumerated here as required, the number of books. And so this is sort of the traditional disposal type of piece that we bring in front of the school committee, but the good news is this year, they're going to be put to good use in another district.
Mr. Superintendent, the illustrative mathematics program that is coming, coming to, right, new to the district?
Correct.
That is pre-K through high school. Is that the same for ELA curriculum? Is it the same for other curriculum that we, we span the 12, the 13 years in that way?
That's a great question. And so we are actually going to be, so this year, we did a math adoption process, very specifically. All schools were involved in that. And so even though there is, this is a K to 12, there are different vendors that provide the supplies in the way that they, this, this math curriculum is applied. So each school has some, a different vendor, if you will, Houghton Mifflin, those types of things that they'll be utilizing. They're a bit, a little bit more specific to grade levels, but it is the same math so that we have that, that vertical alignment. We are going to be doing a, an ELA or English adoption next year. So it's a little early to say, but right now, that's the process that will be entertaining as we start in the fall.
I'll, I'll just say, on behalf of only, only myself, I'm thrilled to see alignment throughout the district. I think that is part, that is part of our strategic plan and, and district-wide goals, to have alignment throughout the schools so students have a, a similar academic experience. And I'm sure this is one of many examples, but, but that is very good to see.
Great. Thank you.
Questions about the math education material donation? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the donation of unused math books as presented.
I would second that.
We have a first and a second, or a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Ms. Jordan?
Yeah.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
And Ms. Cast?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you. At the pleasure of the committee, I may ask to add one more item in new business that is regarding our meeting schedule. We can do that at the end of the meeting if the committee would so prefer, but would, would like to consider what our summertime looks like before we leave today. That does mean that the superintendent would have to be delayed even, even longer on his formative assessment, so we, we may want to give him the, the pleasure of going quickly. But at the pleasure of the committee, I ask that we, we add an item to the agenda.
I agree.
Agreed?
That's fine.
Does that need a motion?
I think it needs a motion to adjust our agenda, to add summertime schedule to our agenda under, we'll add it under old business after the superintendent.
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any debate, any discussion? Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yeah.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. We'll do that after the superintendent's mid-year formative assessment item. This is an item that we are coming around to. We have talked about it for the last couple of meetings, where early on in, in our discussions about subcommittees, we talked about some of the really important things that the, that the school committee does, from policy to budget to a number of items. One of the most important items is the hiring and assessment of the superintendent. And tonight, we have, Mr. Murphy?
When you, when you're done.
I'm done. Go right ahead.
Well, I just wanted you to know that the plan that we had talked about was, was a good plan, except for the fact that I had a little bit of a senior moment when I thought that we had a form to use for a mid-year cycle for a superintendent. And I thought for sure we had one. I went on the website, and so did Liz, and we hunted around and looked, and there isn't one for a superintendent. There's only a summative form. So I called, there are formative ones, but they're for building administrators, not for superintendents. So I called Tracy Novick, our MASC representative, and I explained what we were trying to do. And she was very gracious and said that, you know, you're in a perfect situation where you can do something similar to a mid-cycle that you could do for building administrators. What you could do is, is use the mid-cycle form, the superintendent can use the mid-cycle form as a guideline to present his evidence of the work that he's doing on his goals. And present that to us at a meeting, and then we can, you know, provide him feedback based on that, our own feedback, based on the presentation that he made to us. And then in August, when we do the retreat, he'll set his goals for 20, FY '23, and then we can do the summative evaluation next, next spring. I did have a discussion with Mr. King because certainly when you do someone's formative or summative assessments, you certainly want them to be in agreement with the tool that we use. And Mr. King was gracious enough to accept that idea if it's the will of the board. But that would be so. In our meeting in, in July, Mr. King would present us with a, using the building-level administrator outline, he would present what, the goals that he had set for this year and the progress that he's made. And then we would provide him our feedback. And then, and as I said, in August, he would set goals for '23, FY '23, and then we would do a summative next year. That was what was recommended. She also said that if you wanted to, you could use the summative form and just change the title and make it a mid-year. There's no stopping us from doing that. We can make up our own forms. We don't have to necessarily use the D- up our own forms. We don't have to necessarily use the DESI forms, but I, I liked her first plan. Mr. Chair? Yeah?
Um, can, can I ask Mr. Murphy just, I mean, this would only, I guess would apply if the board decides to go along with that strategy, but if it would be possible, just because of the skepticism and cynicism and so forth that is so prevalent, just in society in general today, if it would be possible to get Tracy to give us something in, in writing in terms of what was passed along to you to have for our records, quite frankly, just for us to have if somebody were to approach us and suggest anything other than an honest desire to go ahead with Mr. King's assessment.
Mr. Murphy?
It's up to the Chair, that's the direction.
It's just, I mean, it's just a suggestion, again, to, to have on hand. I, you know, I don't need it myself, but...
If you want it, I'll, more than happy to call Tracy and have her put it in writing.
Can I, Mr. Chair? This, this sounds like we're going down a rabbit hole, honestly. I, I think that we've come this far into the year at this point. I'm wondering if we have a retreat in August, and, and not that we don't want to assess you, I'm sure you want us to assess you so badly, Thad, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't assess him. I'm all for assessing our, our new superintendent, but where we don't have the form that you thought we had, and that we're talking about, you know, either reworking the, the one for the buildings or renaming the summative one, you know, however, I, that honestly sounds like something we should talk about at our retreat. I think that's something that we should think about. I, I don't think that's something we should decide, because I'm just sitting here and there's like 50 million thoughts going through my head, and honestly, I don't think that anybody feels that that needs to be put on, you know, any kind of, you know, assessment today or tomorrow, or, you know, I think we all have faith in him, that I, I think he can make it through the summer.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure he can, plus he's stuck seeing me and Ryan on July 11th anyways, you know, but I, I, I think that sounds like something that we could work on at our retreat. I think that's something that we should be more thoughtful about, instead of just kind of winging it, just because I, I just feel like this is something that if we don't have a form or whatever, I just, I think we're in a weird place, you know, and I just like us to be more thoughtful and to protect ourselves, as Greg said, just because we don't want, you know, and this is what I've said to Thad personally in private conversations, and, you know, I've said to you, Larry, you know, that I don't ever want anybody to question anything we as a school committee do when it comes to our superintendent or any of our choices, not just the school committee members, but also with our administrative team. So, I think if we can maybe plan that, it's just a thought, just my suggestion.
I also have just one other suggestion. I mean, one piece to a formative assessment is quite simply just feedback, so if between now and the retreat, you could provide feedback to Mr. King, he can also put together some of his own thoughts, too, so I don't think that's particularly winging it. I think that's kind of just getting the ball rolling. And once, because I, personally, I mean, this is my second meeting, so I don't, I'm not going to have a ton to say, but I think for the committee members who've been here longer, that could be something that is ready by the end of the summer, and then he has it for the beginning of the year, not just at the beginning of the year, but like a few weeks before, so that he also knows potentially what he may have to work on or what he's doing really well, et cetera.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. This, this is feedback. Formative is, is feedback. It's not, it, it could be all good stuff, you know, and what I said to Mr. King when we discussed it was, this is a way for us to acknowledge the work that you're doing, and give, and it gives you some protection, too, because it's no surprises. We're transparent going into FY '23. These are the things that are going really well, and, and, you know, my feedback is this, that, and the other area could be, needs more attention, and that's, that's all it is, is feedback.
I do have a question, if I may?
Can I just?
Sorry.
Yeah, and then, when he solidifies his goals for '23 at the retreat, that's what he could present to us at the retreat, is the goals for '23, as we develop our own goals as well.
Ms. Jordan?
Yep, thank you. Regarding the feedback, are you considering also asking the people who work for him to provide feedback as well?
That's not our role.
Okay.
That's not our role. If Mr. King would like to get feedback from his administrative team, that's his, that's certainly his prerogative, but we, we don't do that.
So, we have our retreat. We'll talk a little bit, in a little bit, about exactly when that will be, but it will likely be in August. That is two months from now. Today, June, whatever it is, I believe that the superintendent has been preparing, based on our discussions over the past few, few weeks, past few months, for the provision of information from himself about the performance in this past, this past year, and maybe even beyond. It might be prudent for us to allow him to share that information with us, if he is ready to do so, and use that as a basis for which we could provide feedback. Call it formative, or call it feedback in preparation for a summative that will come later in the summer. That would, I think, accomplish all the goals. It doesn't necessarily require a, a form, or a form to be altered, rather just a, a presentation and that feedback, and then we will formalize an evaluation in later, late summer with a summative evaluation. That might hit the, the ideas that Ms. Jordan was proposing, as well as avoiding any complications with, with forms. Does that sound reasonable to folks?
Mr. Chair? I was going to say, I would, I would endorse that strategy moving, moving forward, and just for the sake of throwing this out there, right now, since we're talking about the retreat, I know Mr. Murphy has some procedures coming up in August, and we meet the first and third week of the month, and he may not be in, in any shape to, to take part in that retreat, the third week of August. So, my suggestion is that we, tonight, that we schedule the retreat for that first Thursday in August, and proceed as, as you suggested in terms of the superintendent's August evaluation, and I would withdraw my earlier suggestion about communication from Tracy.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify? So, are you asking him to give us his feedback tonight?
Today, I believe that the superintendent has prepared information for us based on the requests that we've made, both through the Chair and at previous meetings, to get some feedback from the superintendent about his own assessment of, of his performance over the past year, and unless I'm mistaken, I believe that the superintendent may be ready to do that this evening.
I did put together just a, a, a few slides relative to sort of the pieces that we've, we've looked at, and so there's understandable confusion as it relates to sort of evaluation of a, of a superintendent, and that's because there is no standard, per se. DESI doesn't mandate necessarily a specific form. They have a recommended form, which Mr. Murphy has put before you. There's an entire document about that, which they make recommendations, but not requirements. They have multiple options. They have a one-year option that they suggest, and they say, well, you could do it over two years if you like. You could do a mid-year on a, on a one-year plan. You could do a mid-year, you know, around the holidays, and do a summative at the end, and then a two-year, obviously, you do the, the formative halfway through and so on. So, to complicate matters, or to, just to kind of lend credence to that, is your own, your own kind of organization, MASC, and your Charting the Course Manual, has a very separate and distinctly different set of forms to evaluate a superintendent. So, there's good reason for sort of, you know, a little bit of this angst and confusion over what is the proper way to do this, but I am prepared to at least present a few of the things that we've done in this school year, and I think it, it sort of celebrates not really myself, but what we've accomplished as a district, and, you know, I would like to present some of those things, really from the aspect, or the point of view that so many people are involved in, in getting so many things done this year. So, I did put together a few things. I don't think it's comprehensive, but I think I tried to align it with at least the DESI piece where we have four major standards.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but point of order, this is not on our agenda. This is not an agenda item, because if we were going to do, this is, the only thing we have is Superintendent Midyear Formative Assessment Form Review. That is not a review given by the superintendent or of the superintendent, and that's a point of order, because quite frankly, if parents or students knew that there was going to be a review of or by the superintendent of his actions or his, what he's done for or in the, in the school community, they may have wanted to take part. So, I'm not trying to be, and, and they may have wanted to come and say, I know a lot of kids that wanted, would want to say a lot of nice things about Mr. King. So, I mean, a point of order, if we're following Robert's Rules of Order for these meetings, this is not an agenda item.
We have a point of order that's been expressed. Any discussion on that order? If the committee is of the same mind that the agenda item that is on our agenda is not comprehensive enough to include a superintendent presentation about his work in this past year, I'm happy to accept a motion, if anyone would be willing to make it, to add a new item to our agenda, which of course is our Board's prerogative, to allow the superintendent to make such a presentation.
I, I make the motion. I make the motion that we move to allow Mr. King to make his presentation concerning accomplishments and progress made in the school district.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion for a new agenda item. That's, yeah, what are we up to? We're up to nine F, or no, ten, ten B. So, we do have a motion for a...
Actually, this would be ten C, because you wanted to talk about the...
So, it's ten B, I'm sorry.
Might be C, because of the summer.
Yeah.
So, we do have a, a motion on the floor for a new agenda item. We do have a second all in, or I should say, those in favor, let's write down here. Alicia?
Yea.
Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
I'll vote for it, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And so, without further ado, if the Board is willing, we may turn it over to the superintendent to provide information that he has collected on some of the work that he and his colleagues at the school have done over this past year, keeping in mind that this is not a comprehensive presentation, and it is not a form of our assessment of the superintendent of yet, but certainly information that we are able to respond to today and after today, and use in a potential summative evaluation that will happen later in the summer.
And Mr. Chair, can we have these sent to us, too, since they are not part of our packet?
I will send these out.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Sure, so all I did was put together a couple of things, with the thought that tonight was sort of a formative review, and again, not necessarily meant to be completely comprehensive, but just really to update the committee on sort of some of the things that we've done, some of the things that are in process that we had. So, I started with, with some goals, and so I just, sort of as we met on September 16th, actually, was the first time we had this conversation, believe it or not, that one of the things that was referenced, there is a packet that put, that DESI puts out, and they actually make a recommendation of goals for first-year superintendents. It's very different from a standing superintendent, if you will. So, I've used those as a reference point in terms of sort of the goals and the things that we've done this year, just taking those as DESI's recommendation in their packet for evaluation, and those are the forms that we were looking at. So, I've, I've put in two kind of quick goals that we, that we really have sort of been working around, or I have been working around, and so their first goal was about effective entry and, and direction setting. So, you, you can read these things, but by, by late fall, the, the kind of actionable items were by late, late fall, in collaboration with key district stakeholders, where as defined by DESI, is, is really your district administration, your, your building principals yourselves, is to create and present a meaningful district improvement plan based on district data and identified operational needs. So, that is something that we satisfied. I think that we made that presentation on November 11th, off the top of my head, that we made the Sustainable District Improvement Plan presentation to this committee, and that was in collaboration with our stakeholders, if you will, our building principals, who, you know, worked with their, where their team leads and so on, where we identified a number of areas to improve in the district, and so we, we presented that, you all approved it. That was also created as a result of required, our required school-based improvement plans. The district is not required to do that, but we have a couple of schools that are, so that informed our district improvement plan. So, we did make that presentation. By spring, was to launch a process to engage key stakeholders in identifying the strategies to improve student learning and other district systems of support. So, again, the stakeholders here that are identified by DESI are primarily our, our building principals and other, other district leaders. So, as an example, our Director of Student Support, our Curriculum Director, and so on. So, we have done that, and, and we've sort of activated, if you will, our district, Sustainable District Improvement Plan, and I'll, I'll, you'll see those, the evidence of that as we, as we go forward. The second goal that is recommended by DESI for an incoming superintendent is to sort of maintain momentum through leadership transition, and I found this to be a little bit interesting, especially in our particular case. There was a long transition, and, and I will, I will sort of acknowledge that maintaining that momentum, you know, could be difficult at times over that. I felt like the actionable items that you see up here really had to do and has to do with working with our building principals to identify their district and school improvement goals, as well as with our district administrators. So, that's meeting with our principals early in the year around what they're looking to do in their individual schools, which we did, you know, early on, and that actually informed our, our district improvement plan. And then, the second piece of that is by June 30th, which is upcoming, is, is to really have a summative evaluation with, with all those that I directly supervise. So, our building principals, our, our Special Ed Director, and so on, and so those are being set up as we speak, letting, letting our building administrators sort of wrap up their year, and then we'll be having those. But, you know, the other piece, I think with that transition, there was a really big piece around finance as well, and making sure that our finances stayed in order without a, without a finance manager, our grants, and so on. So, that momentum was a really interesting piece. It involved a lot of HR hiring, sort of rebuilding the central office a little bit, and, and so those are things that weren't identified by DESI, obviously, because we were in a little bit of a unique situation, but also things that are, in my opinion, a part of that maintaining momentum and actually keeping the district moving forward, which I, which I, I feel confident that we did over the last summer. So, if you think about sort of that summative form where we have four standards on which DESI suggests that you, that you sort of think about superintendency, the first one of those is instructional leadership, and so, I'm sorry, if you don't have the form that, so within instructional leadership, which is the Roman numeral, there are one that you see down the right-hand sides parenthetically, and then there are, you know, A, and then there are, you know, A, B, C, D, E, and F indicators on which you're sort of looking at. So what I kind of did is I went through the forms and all those indicators and just highlighted a couple of things that as a district we accomplished over the course of this year or in the middle of. And so again, I really want to reiterate that none of these things are possible. This isn't about me. This is about our district and the great team that we have. So this is about, you know, our, our technology director, our curriculum director, our Director of Student Support. It has to do with, you know, our union leaders and so on. So there's a lot of people involved to make all of these things happen. So I just want to acknowledge, you know, all the folks involved as a part of this, as well as our finance director, so on. So one of the things that we did do this year is an elementary literacy phonics implementation. We started the planning on that last year in the spring. We implemented that early fall as we started the year. That was a new, a new phonics program that we implemented at really K to two to start off the year, and then it, it picked up in grade three as we got into the holiday season that was planned at the time. And that, that lent itself to 1A, if you were to look at the forms. Our elementary literacy professional development. So with, with that implementation, there's ongoing professional development to make sure that that's implemented in the proper fashion, that our teachers are implementing that with integrity and fidelity. So we've maintained a lot of professional development specifically for our phonics program over the course of this year. And we've also extended that all the way up through K through four into, excuse me, K to five into, into the Toy Town School as well, where we've actually coordinated with some outside consultants to provide ongoing professional development, as well as in classroom support for our teachers and our principal. Our principals, excuse me. We did just finish a K to twelve math curriculum adoption. That included a number of our faculty across the district from each school, where we brought in a number of different vendors in terms of different types of curricula. We settled on a particular curriculum and then have moved forward with bringing in that curriculum for next year. We will be kicking off professional development actually at the end of this week, most specifically for our elementary schools and our high schools. They'll, all the math teachers will be participating. Our middle school, the reason that's excluded a little bit is they've been using some of this curriculum already, so they, they're already on board, but they will also be participating as needed with that professional development, beginning next Thursday and Friday. That will be continuing in the fall and would go on throughout the school year. So we've brought in the actual vendors themselves. This isn't talking about, we know a math teacher who's done this from another district, and they've kind of developed their program. We're actually bringing in the vendors to provide that professional development. We did a district-wide assessment, sort of inventory slash evaluation. So we spoke about that here multiple times, and we had so many different assessments going on throughout the district. So what we did was take a look at what those assessments were or are, what the intended outcomes of those were. Is that the way that we were using those, those assessments? And did we need to continue with those? Do we have a platform that we could standardize on and that type of thing? So we, we did that assessment, excuse me, that, that inventory slash evaluation of our assessment platform, and we actually, from an administrative standpoint, moved to a new platform that is more standardized, that we can use one platform instead of many, many different assessments that we were using across the district. So we wanted to give the teachers an ability to kind of go to one place and use a similar platform. And again, that sort of trajectory K to twelve, it gives us a more stable platform as, as students kind of matriculate through the grades. It, it enables us to better communicate with families when they come in. They're not sort of having to transition, oh, my, my son or daughter uses this particular assessment when they're in this grade, and then when they move to a new school, it's something different, whatever those schools were doing. So again, trying to move out of silos and into sort of a more collaborative approach across the district. So we did settle on, we had three different vendors come in for different assessment platforms, and we did settle on one. We will be receiving training on that as well in the, in the early fall. And that will be a sort of a slow rollout. There's a number of components to this platform, and so as we become more comfortable with, with each component, we'll build on that. But it will be one, one location, for the most part, that we can go to for assessments. There are some specialty ones as we get down into kindergarten and those types of things that we need to keep. Some very specific assessments for reading and phonics, but overall, we'll see a new, a platform adoption for assessment that gives us the ability to sort of use data to drive instruction into our classrooms in a more meaningful way than we have in the past. So I, I think it's a real positive. And that was driven by our, by our leadership team. They specifically wanted to pursue that. So we did some evaluation professional development early on in this year, so this is more specific to our principals. So, you know, I, I think one of the pieces that's often overlooked is our, our building leadership doesn't often get direct professional development. And we kind of assume they know what they're doing, and they do, but it doesn't mean that they don't need some support as well. So we did bring in some professional development for our, our principals in a couple of different fashions. We brought in someone around evaluation and supervision specifically, and they've also participated in the Lynch Leadership Academy, which is out of Boston College. Over the course of this year, all of our principals, deans, and assistant principals have participated in that Lynch Leadership Academy, which speaks to moving schools forward, evaluation and supervision, supervision, and how to use those things effectively to drive your mission and vision. And those were new this year. Like I said, the early literacy phonics and monitoring, monitoring and feedback, so kind of ties back up to the top piece there. So what we've had over the course of the year is a consultant from this phonics, the, the program that we adopted. They've been working with our teachers directly over the course of the year. We've received really positive feedback. We've received really positive feedback from our teachers at specifically K to two, and we've seen that in some of our early phonics assessments as well, that our, our early readers are really moving. This is a new trend, this is a new sort of approach for us this year. So we asked a lot of our teachers and they delivered. We're really happy with that. And then, as I mentioned earlier tonight, we do have a planned K to twelve ELA curriculum adoption process for FY twenty-three. So that is something we're working on. We will be working with our DESI support team. Will, will likely help us facilitate some of that adoption process as we, as we move forward. They did the same for us with the math curriculum adoption. And so what you would expect to see with that as well is a lot of professional development around whatever we adopt through the vendors themselves, as opposed to using folks who are sort of local experts. We really wanted to go to, to the experts and bring them in, and that's what we discussed with our S R funding as well. So you would see that when we make an S R three presentation, that you're going to see a lot of the funds that we spend connect directly to the assessment platform, the ELA adoption, the math adoption. You're going to see there, there's a lot when we present on S R three. You're going to see the professional development, the materials, and so on will come forward from that, from that particular grant. The second area that, that DESI sort of puts forward in terms of, of assessment, our evaluation of the superintendent is management and operations. We had a lot going on there this year. It's been a busy year. It's been a busy year and a half, quite frankly. So one of those things is sort of, that we've worked on is student support teams within our schools. So what we found is that our student support teams across the schools each worked a little bit differently, and we wanted to sort of standardize that K to twelve. So there's a student support team at each one of the schools. And so they each kind of had a little bit different approach and they are really, really expected outcomes. And so we worked as a team and developed sort of protocols that were all working towards the same end for those student support teams. This is usually around kind of social, emotional types of, of issues within our building and making sure that we're keeping track of our students and, and their mental, social, social, emotional health. That, those are large teams at each school, teachers, administrators, social workers, and so on, that are really trying to keep tabs on, on our students. The district-wide crisis management plan development, that's been ongoing. I, I, you know, I've been a part of that over the past year and a half, and myself, the principals, and our school resource officer will be sort of putting the finishing touches on that as a final, as an overall document. The schools each have the crisis management plan, but we're really fine tuning that as a district-wide piece. We are also planning a district-wide risk assessment that has been a part of that crisis management plan. I think we mentioned that in here a couple of weeks ago as well. But really, you know, touring the schools and making sure that they're literally physically safe overall. I think overall, over the past year, it seems like forever now, we've been very responsive with our COVID procedures, and it's been especially important this year as there's been a lot of fluctuations in COVID, you know, around how our nurses, so again, the nurses deserve a ton of credit here, as well as our student support director, Ms. Haru. So we've really tried to work with our nurses to make sure that we're responsive to our community in terms of making sure that we're safe. You've seen that as we've brought forward a number of different procedures that we wanted to implement, you know, at least some of which were outside of kind of DESI recommendations. So we've, we've, you know, as well, we had the, the COVID dashboard and some other things as well. This is where the Lynch Leadership Academy for building leaders shows up also. A number of these things can show up in different categories. So Lynch Leadership is, is a well-respected leadership program. They actually offer a doctoral program, but then on top of it, they, they offer sort of a workshop model. We have participated in that. And this year, we brought in our assistant principals and our deans to participate in that. So again, this is about identifying mission and vision, and then how to use your sort of evaluation supervision protocols to align all that and drive, you know, drive good instruction forward. Principal mentoring and professional development, as I mentioned. So we do have, in addition to what I had on the first page, we have had some mentors as well working in the district with some of our principals directly. Some of those we pulled from Lynch Leadership, and then we have also hired some as well. So our principal's been receiving some mentorship throughout the year. Responsive hiring to district and school needs. So there's been a lot of hiring over the summer, as we've mentioned, at the central office, but we've also tried to be responsive to the district overall. So, you know, we've, we've brought in through our S R grants, through our COVID grants, as you'll recall, we decided to bring in and implement a couple of additional nurses over this particular, over the last school year, and we'll be maintaining those going into next year. As we needed that, we brought in additional social workers as we needed to address social, emotional needs. So, you know, what you see under management and operations is an H R piece, and so that's, you know, trying to be responsive to our, the needs of our district. We're adopting a new student information system, and so what that is, it's, it's a fancy way of saying, you know, the computer system you use to track students' schedules and so on. We've used School Brains for a number of years. We adopted School Brains a number of years ago because it was free. So we adopted that. One of the first things when I came here four years ago was, you didn't really hear positives about School Brains. It's not a very effective student information system. We have brought in a new student information system where we've been slowly rolling our information into that over the course of the fall. We actually scheduled our high school students for next year using the new system, our guidance counselor. So everybody's receiving a little bit of different type of professional development depending on their roles. But we will be moving to power, the name of it is Power School is what we'll be using as we move forward. So there's a number of systems out there, and you really have to balance against usability versus, you know, end-user usability versus sort of full-on database types of pieces. So there's a number of different options. This, this one sort of strikes that middle where it's very usable for your end users, but it also gives us a good database function so that we can do better searching and querying that we don't really have in our current system, which is really just more of a web-based system. We facilitated, as you all are a part of, for, for bargaining unit negotiations. So again, that's identified within, within these rubrics. So in this particular year has been the management of the FY twenty-two budget, which I feel very confident in the way we've done that. And then we, you know, I created the, an aligned budget for FY twenty-three, and when I say aligned, I mean specifically to sort of the mission and vision and the Sustainable District Improvement Plan that we presented back in November. So very conscious of that budget and, and making sure that it was aligned to the FY, excuse me, to the, to the Sustainable School Improvement. And then effective grants management over the course of this year. So there's been a lot of work within grants. S R grants have made that even more complicated because there's so much money that they overlap. So as you'll recall, the S R grants allow you to use for the same purposes as our special ed and our Title I grants. So managing that effectively and closing out our old grants. So we still had a number of older grants that needed to be closed out. We did close those out. I know the former administration and Joan did a lot of that as well. But at the same time, we sort of, those, those grants from eighteen, nineteen, and twenty started to get behind. So we've effectively closed those out, and we, we might finally be up to date on all grants that need to be closed are closed. In fact, I signed a number of those in the past week. The third area is family and community engagement, and, and forgive me, I didn't put the, the parentheses out there because this was this evening before we got here. So a, a few things that we've done are that I, some of this is myself and some is other, some is others. So, you know, really being visible throughout the district and the community in as many situations as possible. I, I take a lot of pride in that. Responsive to all family concerns that are brought to my attention. So I meet with families on the regular. I've given families tours of our schools as requested. Any concerns that families have, I communicate with them through, you know, through telephone calls, through text, et cetera. The Parent Square app actually has sort of a social media aspect to it where you can communicate back and forth privately through Parent Square. But some of the other things that we've done for improved communications, we did update the district website, which may not be entirely visible, but we had, there was a, an audit, a federal audit of civil rights and access of our website that we were, a, a number of things were identified that we needed to fix. So, you know, we made that more accessible, if you will. We've also used the district website, I think, a little bit more effectively, and as well as the district Facebook page. I'm not sure how many folks follow. We do have a district Facebook page that is updated or communicated through multiple times a week, whether that's our transportation issues that also come out through Parent Square, whether that's activities that are going on through our district and our different schools. You would go there and be able to see lots of pictures and different things on our Facebook page that, what was really senescent prior to this year. So we've tried to pick that up. So those are, those are three areas that we've, we've improved communications. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I know communications was a big topic here earlier tonight. I'm not suggesting it's perfect or doesn't have area for improvement, and I'll get to that in my final slide. And we're engaged with a number of community stakeholders, just a few off the top of my head. Haywood Hospital, we're really actively engaged with, and I'm happy to report that we are extending the, the, the Health Center will be extended to Toy Town this year. That's, that's a first. We've never covered Toy Town with the Health Center. It's only covered the high school, middle school, and then a couple of years ago it extended to Memorial because they considered that a campus. And we worked with them to extend that grant this year that we could extend that to Toy Town students. So they'll be a part of the Health Center, which they haven't been in the past. You know, that was a bit of a struggle for us relative to COVID, if you will. So we couldn't, we couldn't send Toy Town students up there to get the PCR test, as an example, which is something we would have liked, because Haywood did offer that through the Health Center for the students on that campus. So it's, it's really nice that we have that. We do a lot of work with Haywood Hospital. They, they participate through a number of community stakeholders as well. We have an active relationship and ongoing with Mount Wachusett, it is what MWCC is, for a number of different things, whether that's Trio, whether that's looking for different avenues for our, our high school students for different varied programs and internships that we're continuing to explore. And then lastly, we're very actively engaged with Heel Winchandon on a number of different fronts, although right now they seem to come up a lot with the, the diversity, equity, inclusion. They really do a lot of different things that we work with them on. So as an example, they do some tutoring at Toy Town Elementary through some grants that they do after schools throughout the week, and they've done that, they've been doing that throughout the year. So we work with them and support them in getting their grants, so they have a lot of grant opportunities to, to support Heel Winchandon. And as a district, we support them in that, often provide written support, video support, whatever that happens to be. It's really a two-way street. They've been a great, a great community piece. Professional culture. I think one of the things that we've really been successful in this year is improve central office relations from the, to the schools through some of the hiring that we've done out of central office. You know, I think we've become more efficient and just easier to sort of approach and work with out of central office, I'm happy to say. We've had the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force now. So that's a task force that includes the community. Everyone in the community's been invited. We do get varied community members that attend that, and that's an ongoing component that we still meet with. And then additionally, we have D E I Leadership Professional Development. So our leadership team meets separately to work on diversity, equity, and inclusion with our consultants, and we have recently moved that into school-based, school-based teams as well. So we have, we have school teacher leaders that now work as well with our consulting company, which is Radical Empathy, to work with school-based concerns and issues, so we can address those directly at the school level. So at every level, you know, we're really working to be sensitive to any cultural issues. Ongoing professional development aligned with our district vision. So all the, all the professional development that we're implementing at this point is strictly aligned with that Sustainable District Improvement Plan, and then, then of course, the school improvement plans. improvement plans. And there's quite a bit, as we've mentioned already. You know, I think if those of you who've had conversations with me, we're always focused on a positive student outcomes and high expectations. You know, it's something that I think high expectations really are the piece that, that provide us with high achievement. We can't have high achievement without high expectations, and that's a constant focus of mine. We've had improved, I think, collaboration with our associations, not the least of which is our Teachers Association over the course of this year, where we've collaborated much more closely over the course of the year with our associations. They've been a part of our presentations. They've been a part of some of our professional development from a leadership perspective, and I'm happy to continue with those collaborations. And then lastly, ongoing development of post-secondary success plan. So again, this is identified within, you'll see in the rubrics when you look at those. There's a real focus on what are we doing for our students post-secondary? And so we continue, we work obviously our dual enrollment program, but we also have some plans in place as to what about those students who are not necessarily college-bound? So again, going back to our connections with the community, we have some connections with Mount Wachusett Community College. We have our internships and a number of things that we are, are working on as we move into FY23, and we'll, we'll vet those out more fully in the next year. But those are ongoing plans as we speak. So that sort of leaves us with, with a big final, which is what are the opportunities for growth? I felt like it was important to be honest about some areas that I see that need to improve for myself and possibly the district. So first off, for me personally, is an improved school presence. Through, through a number of different reasons, I haven't been visible and, and available within the individual schools physically as much as I would like. That's as a result of whether it's we didn't have a finance manager, whether that's COVID issues and so on. It's been a really busy year, but, you know, I will put out there, and you will probably see it as one of my goals next year, is that I would, I will manage time more efficient, effectively, to be physically present in the schools on a regular basis, much more regular than I have been this year. Continued improvement in regular and meaningful communications with the community. I think there's always room for improvement in communications. It doesn't matter how well you're doing, there's always room for improvement there. So a couple of just quick ideas that we're going to be playing with is sort of quarterly superintendent's press releases about goings-on around the district, getting those out to the newspaper, to our, our community, and so on, as well as regular departmental updates going out to our school community and the community at large, whether that's through curriculum and, and instruction, whether that's through our special ed department. All departments, you know, the goal would be to more regular communications about student success, student learning, and instruction. Operation procedures improvements is, is an ongoing process, and especially as we brought on a finance manager, we're looking to constantly improve a lot of our procedures within the district. We know it's an area that we need to improve. It was outlined in our school improvement, our district improvement plan, and it's an area that we haven't really had the time, quite frankly, to dig into, but we, we recognize that it's an area and it's something that we'll be focusing on going forward. And I think one of the really, you know, things that we need to do a better job at, and I've mentioned in here routinely, is celebrating and recognizing, you know, whether that's district, school, or classroom achievements. There's a lot of great things that we do in our, in our district, and this comes back up to communication, you know, and the, all of grade one had an author's night a couple, about a month ago now. Every classroom had an author's night where they actually published a book, which was a fantastic event. And so when you think back to that Murdoch Trust conversation we had, these are the types of events that I would like to see, you know, throughout the district and that we're able to celebrate and, and, you know, fund some support of using Murdoch Trust funds as an example. So in that particular example, every family bought a book. The book, this, this published book that our first graders all wrote, it was a fabulous night. You know, I would love to move to, A, to celebrate that, you know, more broadly, and then, and then additionally, you know, I'd like to put those books in those kids' hands and, and, you know, as a support of that program. You know, I would love to see, so larger support. We had a science night as well. I don't know if you were aware, but Ms. Vazina had an expo night just earlier this week. It was amazing. The turnout was incredible. It was her first one that she's done. Every student had a project or whatnot that they put forth. The entire gym, the entire cafeteria was filled. I have to say that based on the parking lot, every student was probably represented by a family member. It was a really nice night. And so again, you know, starting those traditions and recognizing and celebrating those traditions is, is an opportunity for growth, in my opinion. And I think the piece, and I'm not sure it's, it's an area for, for growth, but it's, it's a reminder to maintain our focus on our district improvement plan and positive student outcomes across all areas, academic, social, emotional, and so on, is really the piece that I don't want any of us to lose sight of as we move forward, and you'll see that somehow articulated as I go forward as well. So those are just a number of the things that we've done this year and some of the things that we'll be doing as we go forward. So I appreciate your time tonight. I'll stop talking.
Superintendent, thank you very much for, for that presentation and for providing us some feedback on, on your assessment of, of what you've done and as well as your colleagues across the district. Are there any questions, comments, feedback that the committee would like to give to the superintendent? Mr. Vine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, you know, when I, when I first ran for a school committee the first time around 20 years ago, more than that now, the first question people ask me is if I'd lost my mind. And I guess, you know, I almost have to ask the same of anybody that wants to be a school administrator, whether it's a principal or, in your case, a superintendent, just because of the, the enormous responsibility, the expectations that everybody has of the superintendent. And it's so easy to be critical until you get a look at all that the superintendent is responsible for. And I, you know, nobody's, nobody's perfect. There are, I guess, suggestions I may make to you sometime about certain things, but I can honestly say that I feel 100%, I guess vindicated for lack of a better word, for supporting you to be in this position from the moment we knew it was going to be vacant. And, and I'm glad that you're here. And then some of the things that you've talked about, you mentioned the first grade book, and I was extremely fortunate enough to have been the recipient of one of those books. My daughter bought one for Candy and I from my granddaughter's class, and also was fortunate enough last Friday to be at the, the transition or the promotion of the eighth graders into their next phase of their educational careers, and it was a fantastic and very positive night. And, you know, and of course, graduation was a great event, and I just, I think that, and I can't speak for everybody, and I certainly don't speak for everyone on this committee, but I think overall, the feeling throughout the district is at a much more positive level than it's been for, for quite some time. And again, I can't, that's not the doing of one person, but leadership certainly provides for that. And so I just, I want to thank you for what you've been doing and, and look forward to what plans you have in the future and what improvements you intend to make in both the district and in your own performance.
Thank you, Mr. Vine.
Thank you very much for, for the information. As, as I think I said earlier in the meeting, this is evaluating the superintendent is one of the most important things that we have a responsibility to do as a committee. And so tonight, we have taken an informal step in starting that process. We've received the information from the superintendent. It, it is prudent for this committee to do its due diligence in completing that assessment, and we will do so, excuse me, evaluation, and I think we will do so over the summer so as to really meet that obligation of what a school committee is, is here to do. And so we, we look forward to that, and this is a, a great start. This has been great information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other comments before we move on? All right. We did add an agenda item to the agenda tonight, and that is to talk about what our schedule will look like over the course of this summer. We do typically meet on the first and third Thursday of each month. If we did so throughout the summer, that would be four meetings between July and August. It may not be necessary to meet that often, and we already heard one comment from Mr. Vine earlier about possibly setting our agenda, excuse me, our retreat for the first Thursday in August, which I think would be August 4th. So certainly, any, any thoughts, any ideas on our meeting cadence, the, the number of meetings we would have throughout the summer, and any thoughts on whether August 4th would work for a retreat? Ms. Jordan?
In order to prepare and to provide a specific date and time, how long would the retreat be? What's the timeframe?
Well, Larry, if you want to, go ahead, that's fine.
Usually, we try to do three to four hours.
So like morning?
No, we, well, it doesn't. We can talk about the time, but we typically have done four o'clock in the afternoon till seven o'clock.
Oh, okay.
With like a half hour break for?
With a half hour break for, you know, for some supper. So sometimes it goes to seven, sometimes it might be 7:30, but we try and do it in three hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And it's at the Winchenden School, so you won't have a long travel.
We'll see, maybe. I mean, who knows if I'm in town, so.
Yeah.
Might be a long trek back. I'm not originally from here.
Thoughts about August 4th at 4:00 PM for the retreat?
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule our summer retreat for August 4th.
I'll second that.
Would that be at 4:00 PM? Mr. Murphy?
Four o'clock, yes.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for August 4th, 4:00 PM for the retreat. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, Ms., Ms. Jordan?
Yay.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ms. Cast?
Aye.
And the vote, the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. So we will meet on August 4th from 4:00 PM until we conclude our agenda. Other meetings throughout the summer, we would normally meet on July 7th and July 21st, as well as August 18th. I can tell you that I am unlikely to be available on July 21st.
I'm not available on July 21st.
That's working out. I'm seeing a theme here.
You conspired before, I know you.
Yep, absolutely. And I'm not available July, the week of July 14th, except for the 11th. That's birthday week for Ronan.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Vine?
I guess then I would move that we vote to hold just one meeting in July, and that be for the first Thursday. You said the 7th?
Mm-hmm. We have a motion to meet on July 7th at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
For a regular meeting? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
And Alicia?
Yay.
And the chair votes aye, so we will meet on Thursday, July 7th at 6:00 PM.
And can we make sure we put on that agenda to set the agenda for our retreat?
Absolutely.
That was July, July 7th, right?
Yes.
So we have July 7th at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting, July 18th for, no, excuse me, July 4th for our retreat at 4:00 PM?
No.
August 4th.
Forgive me, forgive me. August 4th at 4:00 PM.
I swear, Ryan.
And...
I just want to do it in my hospital room.
August 4th, are we also having our regular school committee meeting that night? Because that would be the first of the month.
I believe the intention of the motion was to replace the school committee meeting on August 4th with the three to four hour retreat, but...
Well, we've done the retreat, and then last year, I think we did go into a regular school committee meeting. I can't remember.
We do a retreat every summer.
No, I know that, but I can't remember if we went into a regular school committee meeting to...
No, we didn't. There was only one agenda item, just the, it was just the, the retreat. Whatever we developed for an agenda for the retreat.
Okay.
And it's a public meeting, so people could come if they want.
Right, so people can, yeah.
Our next normally scheduled time to meet would be Thursday, August 18th. Is there an interest of the board to meet on Thursday, August 18th? Or begin our normal bi-weekly meetings in September?
May I make a motion to begin again in September for the bi-weekly?
I'll second that.
Don't be so hesitant, Greg.
What I was going to suggest is that we keep the 18th on the calendar, but that it just basically be held in case we should need to, you know, meet that, that week.
All right. Greg did begrudgingly second that motion, so we are now in discussion, and Greg has countered his own...
Greg is confusing himself.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Murphy?
I think we should put it on the calendar for the 18th because we may, it's, it's close to the opening of schools.
That was my only concern, yeah.
And so we may want to have a quick meeting just to...
True.
Get a sense of, you know, where we are with the opening of schools.
That's right, because you can participate by phone if you have to.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think that's the most important meeting.
Yeah.
It's more of a just find out how we're doing in preparation to open schools. So yeah, I could participate by phone, but I'll, I'll probably still be in the hospital on the 18th.
Yeah. Well, can I ask the superintendent, you know, how do you anticipate the need for a school committee meeting?
Well, I think that Mr. Murphy's point is good. We literally are back to school a week from that day, so if there is potential for an update, that would be the final, that would be the final Thursday to do that. We actually have return for teachers that following week.
All right. So you guys will have to cover for me, but...
Nope, not happening.
We do have a motion on the floor to meet, begin meeting in September. Would the maker of that motion like to withdraw it?
I'll withdraw it.
All right. And do we have a motion to begin our bi-weekly meetings on August 18th?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor of beginning our regular cadence of meetings, which is the third and first Thursday of every month, beginning on August 18th, is the motion. Those in favor?
Yay.
Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So just to recap, we do have a regular meeting scheduled. Our, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be July 7th at 6:00 PM. We will hold our retreat on August 4th at 4:00 PM, and we will begin our regular bi-weekly meetings at 6:00 PM on August 18th. All right, very good. Thank you, everyone. Next is future agenda items. On our agenda, you do see a couple of items there, including data presentations, the Murdoch Trust breakdown. Ms. Cast did just ask for the retreat agenda to be added to the agenda of the July 7th meeting, so as to create the agenda for the retreat on July 7th. Are there other future agenda items? I have nothing.
Not at this time.
All right, very good. And so we are all the way to school committee closing comments, and we'll start with Karen, please.
I think the only thing I would like to say is I hope that everyone who celebrates has a happy Father's Day on Sunday to all my fellow committee members and administrators and anybody out there paying attention that's still hanging on now in the audience. That's it for me.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, again, I want to congratulate... Yeah, I, again, I want to congratulate, or I guess that's the word, Ryan, I'm being the chair, and Greg serving as your vice. I want to thank all five of us tonight. I think we did a good job of putting things together and clarifying some things that needed clarification, so I appreciate that. And the presentation by the superintendent tonight was, was outstanding, so I want to thank him for that, and I hope that you do put that on the website where other people can see it, and also we can get a copy of it. I, I thought it was great, great stuff. Thank you, Rob, for your clarification on the budget things, so I feel more confident that things are getting straightened out finally, after I've been on the board seven years, and I've been waiting for this day. So, I thank you for that. And that's, happy Father's Day, everybody, and I also want to say happy, what is it? Not happy, but I want to celebrate.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, yes. I, I want to make mention of Juneteenth. I think it's a, it's a great holiday that has been accepted by the nation and well deserved. Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, congratulations are in order on your ascension to the throne, and appreciate your, your willingness to do that. And second, what, what Karen has to say, thanks to everybody on this committee, and particularly at this point to Alicia for being willing to step up and serve. Also, congratulations to our class of 2022 again, and to the eighth graders that stepped up last Friday. I want to, if I can be so bold, is to congratulate my grandkids, Cody and Paige, for their moving on. And just, I want to congratulate the whole staff on giving us a good year, the, everybody involved in this, in this district, custodians, secretaries, pares, teachers, parents, everybody involved, the administrators. It's, it's been an interesting year bouncing back from COVID, and I think everybody has done their utmost to, to make things as normal as possible for the students and for their coworkers and for the families as well. Yeah, I, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Alicia?
Sure, just a quick gratitude to everyone in the room for what we all do. And then also, a reminder for all teachers, staff, administrators, and school committee members for self-care after a well-deserved, for a well-deserved break and all of the work that was put into the last school year.
Very nice. Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to Larry and to Karen for serving in leadership roles.
Absolutely.
With, with this committee over the last year. Larry, you have done it for so many years, and, and we are thankful for that, and especially thankful for the last year. Karen, thank you very much for serving in the, in the vice chair role and for stepping in at various times. This is, the committee, you know, did, did great work last year under your leadership, so, so thank you very much. I want to say thank you to, to Greg for taking the, the vice chair role. I, I, I promise to be absent very little.
Good.
No, no guarantees, and, and looking, really looking forward to a, a good year. I am excited about being a part of this board going forward. I'm thrilled that Alicia is here with us, and, and very glad that we are at a school district that has such great leadership. So, so thank you very much for that. And to everyone, have a great summer. We're going to meet pretty infrequently throughout the summer, so I hope everyone has a good summer and enjoys your, your Father's Day and your Juneteenth. And with that, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yay.
And the chair votes aye, and we are adjourned at 8:16.